This meeting for order at six oh two. Call for order and we are all here. Reading of the minutes.
Motion to accept.
You want to do both the executive and the?
Yes.
And discussion? All in favor?
She said the executive and regular one.
Oh, okay.
We're going to do both.
I can see the person's look, so I knew something.
She can easily read my mind. Any discussion? Anything in town? All, all in favor? Announcement, annual town meeting, election Monday, March seventeenth, St. Patty's Day, one fifteen P M. to eight P M. at the town office. The annual town meeting will be held Tuesday, March eighteenth, seven P M. at the CMS gym. And for the most fun of the night, do we have any public comments? Oh. You want to let Carla go first?
Yes.
No, just me.
Fine, let's let Carla go first.
Jason, could you put the video on me, please? My name is Carla Duran. I've lived in this town for fifty-six years, as well as I've gone to the school and graduated from the academy for four, so I've been in town for sixty years. I have a request that I think would be beneficial to the people of Corinth, that the, anyone that wants to speak, like myself, or anyone that's in this area that wants to speak, should not be just recorded speaking. They should be standing up and they should be being videoed at the same as way as all of them are being videoed, or the, uh, budget committee that comes and whatnot. I don't feel that it is fair to the people that are watching the video, because they're not getting full concept of what actually is going on here in the meeting. They have no idea who is actually really talking. All they're doing is hearing a voice, because no one states what their name is. It's like the guy on Facebook or the woman, whoever it is, that goes on, and he's anonymous. And that's the same thing as this is. So all you're doing is hearing a voice. So that is a request that I feel should be taken care of. I do understand that some equipment or whatever that the town is eventually going to get that, and that's going to be it. But I feel that as long as everything is going on here, anybody that has something to say, it should be important enough for them to stand up and state who they are and finish saying what they want to say.
Who's in?
Guess I've been told. I won't go against you. Hello, my name's Roseanne Young. I'm a resident of Corinth, and I'm also one of your select board. Since Northern Light left in September, and we had to start looking at different options, we've met up with current turbulent ambulance situations in the news and concerns by residents that when, there wouldn't be sufficient ambulance coverage as a discussion. So there wouldn't be sufficient ambulance coverage, so a discussion was held. The board asked the fire department EMS if they could come up with any suggestions. The plan known as the Stop Gap Plan was proposed and put before the town residents at special town meeting on October twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. The plan was to be a five-month until the town's annual meeting, with the understanding that other options would be explored. Since that time, the board has been looking at and working on possible EMS options and models. This includes looking at other communities in Maine and other parts of the United States. We wanted to exhaust all its possibilities to find an EMS service or model that would benefit the residents of the town while taking the EMS staff into account. Our goal has, was to find a reliable, sustainable, and affordable option that our municipal budget could handle and that would hopefully not overly burden our taxpayers. This is a new territory, as it has been years, actually decades, since Corinth has had a standalone ambulance service. A Stop Gap Plan was, was to give five months to look for other options and use data gained in those five months. Due to time constraints and the need to get next year's budget in order, we were left with three months of data. With the preliminary data and much research and discussion with other towns EMS models and practices, we have presented multiple options. Our primary focus has been looking at other towns similar to Corinth, demographics, populations, tax-based assessment value, and with town similarities. I want to give you an example. If we look at the population of Newport, which is three thousand one hundred and fifty-four, and we're three thousand and three, but upon looking at the demographics, Corinth and Newport are very different. All you have to do is drive through Newport and you'll see the difference. Businesses, waterfront, municipal services. You can even just go on Google Maps and pull them up and you will, you can scan in and look at what they have. That being said, you may have heard us mention Carmel and Levant. When you look at these demographics, they better reflect our own town. Even if you drive through or Google Map it, you will see that we look more alike. Corinth has been a drive-through town. We have Route fifteen and forty-three. At some point, if those, if you're going on those routes, you will connect to Corinth. This has led Corinth to become a bedroom community. We have a rural feel that allows people to, at ease to communicate to outlined cities such as Bangor, Orano, and Newport. With this big draw to our community, and they're like other places that have the same population but other resources, such as Shapley and Alfred, Maine, which do indeed have a twenty-four-seven ambulance service. But they also have ponds, lakes, Kennebec River, recreational facilities to help them afford such services. I say all that to ensure you that this board has not taken this task lightly and are truly trying to come up with a solution for EMS. The option being recommended by the board may not be a final answer to our EMS issues, but we, but we could use it to, use this next year here to communicate, gather the necessary information to help us go onward and to see where it will live for Maine to have an EMS service and valuable time. It would also give us time to deal, talk with other communities in our area and to see if we could work on a partnership in different ways. I just hope that you will understand that this board has not taken this matter lightly. We have worked hard, and the proposal that we give you is not as far off from what other communities such as Levant and Carmel are doing at this present time. Thank you.
Do we have any other public comment?
I'm not sure what you might want to add.
On Chris McDonald. I've been proud to be part of this board. Our focus has been taking care of our community and bringing the community together. One way we chose to do that was to use an honest donation to provide corn, Christmas and corn. We all donated our time and attempted to engage the fire department. However, they didn't want any part of it until the night before. Yet they're relying on this community to fund the only EMS option they are willing to discuss, not willing to compromise or understand it will create a hardship for many of our community members. I was voted in by my community, and many of those I have spoken to are concerned about another tax increase after the significant increase last year. When they hear about regionalization, they have grown even more concerned that year after year, we will see significant tax increases. Since I've been on the board, I've learned and have been better able to understand small town government. It's definitely been a learning curve. What I was most surprised about is the behavior and presentation of the fire per, fire department personnel who attend select board meetings. We've heard snarky remarks, been yelled at, walked out on, and lied to. I want to support a fire department that works as a team within and with the board. I personally spoken with other local fire department. Their budgets are much more conservative than what has been proposed, and I continue not to understand that. For instance, Levant's budget for twenty twenty-four, the fire and EMS combined, was two hundred and thirty-six thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight. And Corinth's combined proposed budget for fire and EMS would end up being six hundred thousand, one hundred and eighty. This will increase our bill rate two mils alone. I support our town having fire EMS, but we are all one. We need to work together for the sake of our community.
That's because of number six hundred and seventy-five.
Well, didn't you?
Uh, if you include the reserve account funding, it's six seventy.
Okay.
That's what it was.
I got confused. It was on the, I saw that today.
I just, I just wondered again.
Do we have anybody else? All right, we'll move on. Fire chief report?
Well, all I've got is that the new Cascade showed up today, which is a compressor that fills our air bottles. That was a Stephen and Tabitha King grant of fifty thousand dollars.
Excuse me? You're supposed to be taping him?
Yeah.
I'm sorry about that.
Cam's pointing right at him.
Pardon?
Cam's pointing right at him. I am taping him.
I didn't stand, I forgot.
Not at all?
That is, thank you.
Jacob?
I don't have anything other than what's in my written report.
All right, so moving on to unfinished business. Town meeting warrant. So. Roseanne, do we want to go over? Oh, wait, first I have just a couple of housekeeping questions for Jason. So the last meeting, when we were here, you said there are towns in the state of Maine that have the same call volume as us, and they have very, very large budgets, and they're the same size community. So on Roseanne's second request, you sent us a list of towns. The only one that has a large budget is Eddington. Do these come off from the, the stabilization funding?
No.
Reports? They didn't?
They came off of their publicly available budgets on their town websites.
Okay, so when you, so you just put these on here?
Yep.
So Eddington, you have an eight hundred and ninety-two thousand, four hundred and thirty-six. That is their entire budget for their protected. That's not their EMS budget.
No, but they have, they have full-time staff, that's why I included it, because they have full-time fire staff that serve on both sides of it. Their budget would probably lean towards their, if they're firefighters, there are also EMS clinicians that are available in the station, so.
They only have an on-call.
They don't?
They, they have a responder. They don't have an ambulance.
I know, I know, I'm aware.
But with this, you included it at eight hundred and ninety-two thousand, but that isn't their EMS budget by any means.
No, that's their fire EMS budget.
No, no, that's their sheriff, that's, that's the whole protected.
It's their public safety budget, but it didn't say anything about sheriff in there, so.
It, it has itemized.
Yeah, because we've, we've taught and like, so my question is, which one of the, which one of them is the same size as ours that has the very, very large budget? Because it was made to sound that we're trying to short the EMS, and I need to know which towns have the large budget.
So one of the ones, one of the specific ones that I was talking about was Alfred, Maine. But when I went back and listened and I said, okay, they have a large budget, Alfred, Maine does have a large budget, they have a one-point-two-million-dollar-a-year budget, but their valuation is way different than ours. Because their, their valuation, I think, is, I, I don't remember it, but it's like hundreds of millions more than ours. So I didn't include Alfred in that, because when I, when I spoke to the chief at Alfred and he told me they do about four hundred calls a year, and they have a one-point-two-million-dollar budget, and they, that's, that is what I was referring to, is about the same size as us. They do about four hundred calls a year, they have this, sort of, I think their population is similar to ours, but their valuation is through the roof.
So Levant, for instance, has our, um, what, what Roseanne's proposal that the last time that she did, her rates are actually one and a half to two dollars more than anybody that surrounds us with the same thing.
What, I don't know what you mean by rates, like pay rates?
For the median rates. So in actuality, the proposal that she brought last time is actually above anybody that is in the surrounding that is the same as us, such as Levant.
For call time, I mean for runtime.
Right, for runtime. So the stipend, the difference is, um, ten dollars for a driver, so, but the call pay is so much higher, that would even out. So I want to understand, before we go into this, where, because you've also said that people can make twice as much, that anywhere around us, they can make twice as much as they can make here.
At fifteen dollars an hour.
But where? That's my question. That was my question that last meeting, where?
Maine Health just advertised today that they're hiring paramedics at twenty-eight dollars an hour.
But not at the, they're, they're not doing the same thing. You have to do apples to apples. You can't give me, well, you would have to go there, you would have to stay there.
And I said that, I said that, when I, when I mentioned that we could make more working elsewhere. I said that we might have to go there and stay there, and we wouldn't be at home. That, that, I don't, I don't dispute that at all.
Where, where in the surrounding are, are we, is that proposal under? How is that proposal under what the surrounding communities have?
Which proposal?
The proposal last week. The, if you have this one, that has Corinth A. and Corinth B. in your hand, you can see that one. That was per?
The fifty-dollar stipend.
It is the same, the same time, the same coverage, and that one covers the community twenty-four-seven, which is some of the concern in town, some of the concern is the tax. So what I would like to know, and I didn't get an answer either from this list or last week, is in what way was that proposal undermining or undercutting the EMS in this town?
Was that something that I said?
You said, "The only reason we're doing is because we live here," and that none of us would do it for this.
No, I said, "I wouldn't do it for that." I, I didn't, I did not speak on behalf of anyone else at that meeting.
Well, yeah, you spoke for Rowan, you're right, it was just you and Rowan. So. Okay.
We just had to clarify, we are looking at, we are not looking at ambulance services, we are not looking at hospitals. We are looking at other municipalities that are similar in size and demographic.
We need to compare apples to apples.
And, and even looking at these other communities, we're comparing different types of apples. Levant, Carmel, and us, one's a Mackintosh, one's a Cortland, and one's a Pink Lady, right? We're different types of apples, but we're still an apple. So we cannot compare that, um, can't compare, we, it's not a comparison. Um, I, I want to respect, and as I said, my thing, we want to, to be mindful of our local EMS people, talking to other towns and other EMS, you know, these people work hard for their community, and we don't want to take that lightly. In saying that, they are giving to their community by serving their community, and we're trying to give something that the town can show an appreciation. Does it show their value? No, it shows our appreciation. And Levant does the sixty-dollar stipend for driver, a hundred and twenty-dollar for the EMS. Alvin does five dollars an hour on-call.
What's a hundred and fifty-dollar for?
A hundred and twenty dollars?
Per day?
It's first, it's like we are first shift, it's for the provider. So the provider gets paid a hundred and twenty dollars per twelve-hour shift. And I have a dollar sign in there, so forgive me, it's hours, not dollars.
Okay.
And firefighters, uh, driver firefighters get sixty.
Per day?
Per shift. Per twelve, per twelve-hour shift. And.
All right, so that doesn't quite answer my question, but that, that was my question for that. So on the warrant. We've all read the town management report, right? So we have several issues with that. Where do we want to go with that?
Would you like me just to do a brief overview?
Yep, that would be one. That would be one. I don't do briefs, so you get to.
All right, so we did receive the voters petition requesting a warrant article on funding the three hundred sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and two dollars for EMS coverage. The specific wording is, "Shelton Town vote appropriate the sum of three hundred sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and two dollars for the Corinth Fire Department to pay for ambulance service for the fiscal year. This initiative will positively impact our community by providing twenty-four-hour-a-day coverage with Corinth Fire Department staffing." So I reached out to MMA because the second statement was sort of a subtext, and I wasn't sure if that needed to be included. And when I did, they came down with a concern about the formatting of the proposed question, and that it doesn't include a funding source for the expenditure. So their opinion is that if this article were to pass at town meeting, it wouldn't have any effect, because it doesn't provide for funding. I did ask if it could be amended from the floor, and they said changing it so that it was raising the funding from property taxes, which is, is what it would be, would be a substantive change. And people that signed the petition may not have signed if they were aware of that, so they said that would be out of order. Having said that, the board is obligated to put this before voters in its current form.
With this wording, yeah.
Right, so you don't have the authority to amend it, the petitioners don't have the ability to amend it. It has to go in this format.
It goes in that format on the warrant, and if it passes, it has no effect because there's no funding.
That's what the lawyers at MMA believe. So you, you aren't required to put it on the annual meeting, uh, you could call a special for it. I don't see where that would be beneficial. So really, I, I think the, the decision for the board to make is, do you want to, you're going to use your proposal, do you also want to do a, a corrected version of their proposal to do that at the annual town meeting, knowing that if you choose not to, there could be another petition coming in next week, and you might have to do a special town meeting to resolve it?
So if we. If we put it on as-is. And they voted up, there's no way to fund it, and it has no effect, and then we have no funding for anything. Because if they vote that one up, there's no funding. So we have no funding for anything, if we leave it in its present form. So we have to correct the mistake.
I, I would say that it, it would be wise for us to fix the problem, put it in, correct it, and then we're going to put our own thing in once. So I, I've seen the reason to have a special town meeting for that.
No, me neither.
What's, what's the guidance from the MMA meme that said, neither the petitioner nor the board has any power to correct the wording of the petition? What's that mean?
So the article as it was submitted in the petition has to appear before the people. So you can put a corrected version forth as well, but no matter what you do, you've got to present it as written.
Just like that, the way it is.
So i- if you were going to present a corrected version, what we would do is, would bring up the petition first, would explain the, the technical error with it, and ask everybody to vote against it, just as a procedural matter, and then they could move on to the corrected version, which would be for the same anonymity, and debate and vote on that. Would be my recommendation.
Or we could put that in the present form, explain it, and then only present our own. And then look forward to another petition.
And the special town meeting.
Can I talk?
I'm going to allow it on this.
I, I can't, I'm no lawyer, but I can't overlook what you just said, Jacob, about, would the people have signed it if they had known where the money was coming from? I don't, I don't think what, I, I.
Yeah, and I, I have no idea.
I don't think what they're telling you is a fair synopsis of the case, because if somebody knew the taxes was going to go up two or three mils, they might not have signed it. I don't, I don't know that, but nobody else does either.
Right, a- and that's the reason that it wouldn't be permissible to make that amendment from the floor.
So if they correct it, what if them people want to try to take their name off? I, I get you don't want to have another town meeting, but if you, if you word it right, and then they sign it, that seems to me like the right way to do it.
Okay.
Um, that's just me.
Yeah, and that's the board's decision, the, even if it is coming from taxes, there's no reference to how much it would.
No.
I mean, all they'd have to do was say, instead of appropriate, if they'd said raise and appropriate, would have been no problem at all. So, I see what you're saying, I.
So it has to go on there with that wording. We have to explain that it's a mistake and that we want it to vote down. So then, do we include one option or two? And which option are we thinking we're going to include?
I just need to, I just need to say something here about that. We have, we met with our budget committee, and they brought forth several options, several. Our budget committee does not recommend it. We have gone through and looked at things and do not recommend it. Now, that being said, I feel it's irresponsible to put something on a warrant, an article on a warrant. When we know, we've done our due diligence to do the best for this town. That we know is going to fiscally, and we do not know if we have, I mean, honestly, none of us know what's going to happen. We need time to figure this out, and we, five months was not enough. I regret what we did in the first place. So I'm, I'm concerned. That being said, I, I believe in people being able to create a petition. And to, you know, maybe their voices heard. That's, that's a right we all like, right? But in this instance, I would much rather go towards another special town meeting, so the people can be aware of what they're, you know, I'm sure they assumed that was going to be from taxes, but if you're, if you're going to put a petition out there, you have to be aware of what you're doing. I just, I have concerns. I have concerns because.
And in all honesty, if they, if we have the other option, what exactly are they petitioning? Just the higher amount would be the petition.
Or what they think it's going to cover, but we already have the coverage there.
Right. So the, the.
Well, so what I have, what would happen if we went to this and they voted the one then, the, uh, option that we put in?
Then we are going back to Northern Light being our primary EMS.
No, if they voted up the option.
If they voted our option in, then what happens?
Corinth B.
Oh.
I mean, Corinth A.
If they voted our option in at the regular town meeting, then what becomes of that petition?
Well, then they could do another petition.
And we have a special town meeting, and then if they vote that up, we send a supplemental tax bill to cover it.
I mean, depending on the time that they, assuming they did it quickly, it would be before tax commitment anyway.
I guess my take on this is, I hate to do a special, because a lot of people are fine going to town meeting, and if you have a big enough crowd, you're going to get a good consensus of what people really think, one way or the other. With a special, lots of times people don't go to specials. And you get, just get special interests or people that, you know, you get groups to go, and I, I honestly think if we're going to do this, and we obviously do it at regular town meeting, when we can get the consensus of the most people. That's, I mean, there again, I, I just think you're prolonging something.
But we got to do it right.
Well, we got to do it right, absolutely, Charlie, but like, I, I think I agree with what Jacob said is, you know, put that in, recommend voting it down, then bring that one up, and then have the option we come up with for ourselves, or maybe do it reverse, put ours in first and then the other option, but either way, I think that the town meeting is the time to do it. I don't think a special is a good time to do anything, because then that, you'd have to do, you still have to find the money. And after we've already had regular town meeting, where are you going to find the money? It's already been spoken about.
Well, you have to have supplemental taxes.
It would be a supplemental tax, but that's, but then that's not much fun either. It would be a supplemental tax, but that's, but then that's not much fun either.
Well, it's not gonna be much fun, you know? Supplemental tax is not gonna be different than if they have a bigger tax bill if they voted in.
Yeah, but you know, Charlie, sometimes people, when they see the bigger number up front, first time, you know, it's like, give me a dollar. Or give me a dollar five. You say, I won't give you a dollar five, I'll give you a dollar, but you say, give me a dollar and then say five cents.
If we go around the room and say what we're, what we think, um, do you want to go to town meeting with it? Or give the option that they can come back at with another petition? Word it right and do whatever and we go to special. Do you wanna, do you wanna correct their mistake and take it to town meeting? Okay, so we already have to include their words. We have to include it that way. And we have to explain it's a mistake, gotta be voted down. So do we then include it structured correctly? And our option and say our option is what the budget committee recommends and what the select board, yep? So...
It's gonna be very confusing.
It, it is confusing.
I think the people are gonna be so confused that they're gonna walk down that place wondering what happens.
I don't think, I mean, because we...
We have two and ours. The wrong one, they...
We have two the same, one...
Well, you have to get the first one out of the way. That's, I mean, that's what I would say. You get the first one out of the way, the petition one out of the way. This is, this has to be voted down because if you vote it in, then we're gonna, you're gonna have nothing.
There's a funny thought.
Can I say something?
Yes.
Basically, if you take your everyday person, if you don't have something that's in there that's just a yes or no question. And put it bluntly, do you want this or do you want that? And you put it in two or three different ways, the way that you guys are talking about. You're gonna have a lot of people there that are gonna be confused and... They're not gonna know what they're voting for and they may end up voting for something that they never wanted in the first place. So as far as wording it, you gotta really make it quite simple.
Yes, I see.
That's why I say even, even if you, if we put their wording on, say, have that one voted down. And then put our own on. To put two on the same and then our own.
Can you point this at me? Thanks.
Sure.
Thanks. Um, oh, hold on, can you stand up too? Um, so I could, that was my petition, so everyone's aware. And I can own the fact that I screwed up on not putting the funding source on there. Are we able to withdraw the petition?
Not once it's handed in, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Could I just say, could it be presented in a way so people would kinda understand how much their taxes may go up? Like maybe put a figure there?
Like, we're hoping to give like a median, um, you know, I, I think it'll be one of us that says, you know, my taxes are this. Um, and, and this is what it will go up. And so like, if we have a median, like across here, you know, we have a really different amount. Like I pay the least amount of taxes. I know.
I probably do, no.
So what we're hoping is that one of us will give, you know, this is what our taxes are now.
Exactly.
This is what it will be with corn A and this is what it would be with corn B. So that, that's what we're hoping to make it clear. And if we have a median, then you can say, well, that's worth one fifty and I'm three hundred thousand, so it would be that.
Yeah.
So...
I think it could be explained out. I think it could be explained out, just, uh, most people with Spanish to understand say, you see two together here. The first one is verbiage is wrong. We have no funding sources. The second one is exactly the same thing, but that's the proper, the language to fund it. Then down, down, well, the line underneath it, and then have ours. And, and this will be ours to be recommended by the selectmen and the budget committee. I know.
Ask Jason White, why would you, why, why are you asking if you can take a bet and retrieve it or whatever?
It wasn't our intent to try to pull one over on anyone. Our, our intent when we did it was that it would be a funding source from taxes. So leaving that language off, this, I've never done a petition before.
But the intention was to back the board into putting that on the warrant.
Well, it's, it's law by statute, right?
Right, but that's what I'm saying.
We're just using the, using the laws.
That was the intention.
Yep.
Okay.
So that's being said, you mean you want to withdraw and not do a petition? Is that what you're saying?
Well, no, if the petition doesn't have any value and it adds confusion to the process. And if there's an opportunity for, for it to seem like we lacked a little bit of transparency, that's not the goal. And if, if, if that's at all the goal, if that's at all a possibility that we lacked transparency with it... Because I kind of agree with Jeff, right? That if people had saw that, would they have signed it? Now, I'll tell you, when I was collecting signatures, when I discussed it with people, I was clear. Like, this is just to get it on the ballot so you can vote on it, right? Whether you, whether you, you are in favor of voting for it or not, it's your opportunity to vote. Um, we didn't discuss anything about the cost of it or the, how it's gonna get funded or the taxes or anything like that. So I kinda feel like I agree with Jeff a little bit here, right? Maybe, maybe that verbi- that, not maybe, that verbiage should have been on it. Um, I never did a petition before, so I can own that I made that error. That's why I'm asking, if it could be, if the petition could be withdrawn. And it sounded to me anyway, like after we started doing the petition, that the board was leaning on putting that... That number on the warrant anyway. So if it, if that's the process that the board was gonna go, I'd be willing to withdraw the petition. Because having it on there with no funding source, if that got voted up and nothing else got voted on... The whole town would be in probably a bad spot. And that's what we feel is the right, is, is the best option. So I wanna get it done the right way. I wanna get it done with transparency. And I, I just wanna be clear about what our intentions were, so.
Neither of you tell me why our budget is twice the amount of other budgets around us in same thing?
Oh, that's okay. Um, I can't really tell you that, right? I could tell you that while we've been working with the strategic planning committee. And the consultants has been looking at other communities' budgets, there... If you've seen one budget, you've seen one budget. Everybody does things a little bit different. And for Kanduske, for example, they don't, they don't put in their fire EMS budget... Their workman's comp or their, uh, social security taxes. It comes off of the payroll line for the entire town. So it's not part of the fire department, fire department's budget. When we looked at Glenburn's budget, there was items on their budget that, um, that were just on other lines, other lines as well, right? So I can't...
So we'll move on because it's not heavy, I'll tell you what you want.
Yeah.
All right, so where do you stand? Fix their mistake and add it correctly on this? Or go put their wording on and whatever option we decide? I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but you're no more.
I know. Correct it and come back.
Roseanne wants to correct it.
I say correct it.
We're gonna correct it?
And leave it on the warrant, yes.
That's not, I don't think that's what they were saying.
I'm saying they can bring in another petition.
They can correct their, just saying, yeah. All right, and that, you're agreeing with Taylor.
I, I'm agreeing with Chris. It's, it's just a really difficult thing because, you know, what was the intent? And I'm sure people already thought it was gonna be a budget item. I mean, I mean, come on, where, where, who was gonna pay for it?
I, I would say that, but, but Jason being transparent, that was something I didn't realize. Nothing, nothing, let me finish. Nothing was said about money. Nothing was said about money, he just said get it on a petition. And most people who sign petitions, it's not gonna cost any money. And I'm not, and I'm not saying that you did anything wrong, it's just the fact, I did not realize that myself until you just, you just said that. That you didn't mention money, just, just had a petition for them, so... That does kinda change my take on it, to be honest with you, because of the fact that, I mean, I will sign petition, you know, because I'm just a Dutton Thomas. But I, I do think that that will, might have made a difference. I'm not saying you couldn't get the signature, but I do think that would have made a difference. I'm with you, great with you, Jeffrey, again.
Jeez.
Two in one night, Jeff. Two in one, could you put that in a minute? Put that in a minute. Two people agreed with Jeff Dow on February sixth. Go ahead, Roseanne.
Yeah, that's, I was scared to see that.
I'm really struggling with us because I, I do want, you know, if people really wanted this on there, then okay. But it was a hundred and...
Forty-one, hundred and forty-one.
Four hundred and forty-one people.
Actually, I'm changing, I'm going with you, just so you know.
Because I'm looking at it this way, and, and, and this is how I'm looking at it. If this had gone before our budget committee, which it did. And our budget committee who worked tirelessly on this, said, I, we cannot support it. It does not look good for our town. And at that point, I was gonna say, I will not, I won't support putting it on the warrant. Because it isn't, it doesn't appear to be good for our town. We came up with something that finally everybody could agree on between the, and I'll clarify that, between the budget committee and the board. And said, this is something that can work. We're not saying it's the end-all. We're saying we have not had enough time in the three months since we've been starting this process. To get enough data, to get enough information and come up with a good plan that is going to suit our EMS and suit the town. Sadly, looking at these other towns, the EMS departments, it, it's a brunt on them, right? They're doing it to serve their communities. I talked to Carmel, they, they don't get anything at night. It's just you come if you can, and if you can't, then another ambulance service, EMS service comes. They're looking into a stipend. They liked our stipend idea. So, I mean, they already had it on their own, but that's something they're looking at. So I struggle with it because if it had been left to the budget committee and to the board to beat out a plan... This is the plan that would have been put forward. We are, it's, it's like we're being, uh, you wanna be able to have people have it, but it's like, if you, you know, if you trust us... Give us a year to get the data, to find out what we can do, to see what's gonna happen in the EMS world as a whole. So I, I'm, I, I, I would rather have them go and do another petition.
Okay, so what do you think?
I'm, I agree with her now.
And I do too.
Me too.
All right.
I mean, just because, like I said, I did not realize how the petition was presented.
So we'll include their wording with an explanation. Um, and include whatever we decide for our option. And then if they come with another petition, then we'll do it that way.
And just to, to make it official, could I request the board vote to include...
Absolutely.
The petition language in the warrant?
I make a motion that we, um, include the petition language in the warrant.
Support it.
Oh, a new discussion? All favors. All right, now, one thing out of the way, next. We have had nine hundred and eighty-three different options. So go around the room and what is you...
Okay, stop exaggerating.
It was a little exaggerated.
That was a huge exaggeration.
Are you looking at a different option now?
No, I'm, uh, the, we talked about at the workshop, right? We talked about at the workshop, uh, doing the twenty-four, I mean, the, um, forty hour, forty hour week.
The last meeting, okay.
Right.
At the forty hour.
And that's corn A.
And, and let me give the reasoning, because you ran the numbers for us. And it really, really, the, the one I gave at the last select board meeting... The twenty-four hour coverage option. That seemed to be a better fit all around after looking at the forty hour numbers. The one that I gave.
It addresses all of the concerns.
It does, and then again, we're not saying this is, this is how it's gonna be forever. This will just give us enough time to really look at what's going on around us and maybe work with other communities. And see what's gonna be happening with Northern Light, if they are gonna totally fold. I mean, that's the biggest and the biggest concern, right? Is if Northern Light totally folds, what ambulance service is gonna be out there?
None.
And that's been the concern, and that's what we want to provide our community with a sense of security.
So is, you're saying A?
A.
Yes.
So that was the one that you presented before, for the budget committee?
No, well, the budget committee, yes.
And that's the one where we all sat here and...
That's right.
And they, which was the better one.
And it's, which is the one the budget committee recommends.
Okay.
Yes.
And they looked at multiple.
Yes, yeah. They spent a lot of time on our budget, a lot.
For their seventy-five bucks.
Seventy-five bucks?
That was, that's what they get paid for their...
So you wanna make a motion on that, Roseanne?
I will make a motion.
Did anybody have anything before you do?
No, yep.
Just before you do, is there any other options we wanna consider before we make that motion?
The only other option I would say is... We made ourselves an island, I believe, with this, with the stopgap. And made the motion that, uh, well, the town pulled up that they didn't want to see the ambulance leave town. I think we need to have that discussion. That if we could work with other towns, because I'm gonna tell you where some of the revenue came from. Speaking with Levant, they, um, that's, we pay them fifty thousand dollars a year to be their, um, ambulance. Uh, they also, they do get some money from Northern Light and their billing. And I think we need to look at our billing and to make sure that our billing is being done to its fullest extent to fill the gap. So I think there's multiple things we can look at, but I know it is a hard thing for our EMS not to go to a call. But I think if we looked at options where maybe they aren't the primary person to go. But if, if, if Northern Light says they can't go, that if we make an agreement, if we can make an agreement with those towns to maybe at least...
We won't be able to do that for a town meeting.
No, but we've got, but right now, we're saying with the stopgap that the ambulance doesn't need town.
Right.
So we've gotta have that discuss, I mean, we had that discussion at the special meeting.
Yeah, I understand that, but that's not gonna help us make a decision by tonight?
I'm just, she just said if there's anything else, and I'm giving you the anything else.
But thinking about, oh, I'm sorry.
Maybe not as the primary, like, you know, it's another, but I mean...
Or it's just a four-car accident in Exeter and they have three ambulances there. But we're not the primary to go, but we could go in that situation because we're needed. But that way, we're not responding to every stub tow in Exeter because we can't afford our citizens to correct.
And that, and that would be, I believe, I would think that would be a, uh, fire department EMS policy and procedure, right?
But we can talk about that later.
Correct, but I'm just saying, you know, we, that's one of the things that was put in place with the stopgap, correct?
Yes, and that would be, need to be corrected at town meeting, so, yeah.
I just wanna make, I just wanna put that out there so people can be thinking about it, um...
Agreed. So is this the option we want to make a motion and go with? Or is there any other option, anything else you recommend that we look at before we...
Uh, and I've sent a s- a slew of stuff out, probably too much.
Too much, we got it.
The, the only discussion point I might raise about what Roseanne is talking about is... I mean, there is gonna be a tax increase to fund that. And is there a level of confidence that if we're collecting that money in taxes, that we're gonna have enough people to render the service?
That's the only other thing that I have a concern about, um, speaking with the other towns. They're even in worse off shape than we are. And that, and if we lose two, we, you know, two people say we can't do this and walk away. I'm hoping that the community will come together and realize, we're not saying this is forever. Who knows, maybe we'll find it's the perfect plan and we got it, but, but we also say, you know, this is for this year. And so we can get the information we need and then we see what's going on with Northern Light. Do they somehow pull themselves up? Do they get bought out and a bigger healthcare system comes in and has an ambulance resources? Who knows, right?
But there'd be the same people that, they would figure they could do it on their money, that, what they propose, with the EMS?
No, he's saying because we had several last meetings, well, we had two people that said they wouldn't do it. There'd been several... There have been several.
Oh, you mean, who wrote this program?
Because right now. There's, there's been several since on the EMS that have said, yes, that, you know, they would do it.
Correct.
So.
Let's try it.
The the thing is, is that we have to set wages, we have to set wages at a level.
And we have to do recruitment. And if that means we, you know, other towns.
And I thought that we were low, but once I really dove in and really looked at all the other towns, we're not low. We're not shorting them. Like you keep saying, this isn't fair, or it isn't, uh, we're not low. We're, we're in, we're in the realm. So, you know, that, we have to set the wages where the town can afford it.
We have to start somewhere.
So, go ahead.
I just want to ask one question, this new health center thing from Picardon that's coming in, that's in Brownville and Dover and that, do they have any ambulance in that?
I do not believe they do.
They don't, they don't.
They do everything else but that.
Alright, so, go ahead and make your motion, I think we're set now, I just wanted to make sure.
So this includes two full-time, twenty-four seven?
This includes a per diem, so it could be, you know, it's a twelve-hour shift, same as we're doing now.
Okay.
And it's, um, two people on.
Yeah.
That are stipended, instead of paid fifteen dollars an hour.
So what about the fire chief? He can't do any runs?
Well, okay, so, looking at the timesheets, um, we, the first two months of data, we had variances. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mark. We had variances, and we've, and we, I reached out to Casey and worked with Casey on it, and we found that Mark is filling during the day when people either can't, and I spoke with you, Mark, um, that if, you know, if they, if they get off, if they get off, um, at their, their other job, other fire station job, and they can't get here till eight, Mark's covering six to eight. So he's getting paid his, his daily hourly rate. Um, and I think he's doing it more than he realizes or has complained about. So, um, two options is, you can change it in your hours, or you can continue to do so. And then we had, uh, three dates where, uh, this was for January, and this is stuff we're still figuring out. I haven't gone back to November, December, 'cause I've just been focusing on this. But in January, in January, there was three twelve, daytime twelve-hour shifts that Mark took on. So, Mark is doing it, um.
So, he's a substitute?
He's a substitute, well, he's filling, you're filling in the gaps, he's our variable.
Correct.
I mean, I mean, that's, that's another thing to look at.
Yeah, and and we're gonna.
I mean, we're gonna have to dive.
Once we get through this, then we're gonna go over duties and the officers and get Casey paid if she's doing payroll and, you know.
But we're just gonna have to review the whole thing, because.
Yeah, we have to start from scratch.
Well, and it's like, when Northern Light left, it put us in a place that we haven't been in a long time, and we're having to, uh, what's the word, not re-mod.
Restructure.
Restructure, we're having to restructure, and we're trying to figure it out, but three months is really a short amount of time to be figuring it out.
Alright, so, go ahead and make your motion.
Does everybody feel comfortable with it now?
Yes.
Yes.
I make a motion that we put current Plan A EMS twenty-four-seven scheduled coverage option into as an article for the warrant for EMS.
I support it. Any discussion?
Have we put any other options, that's gonna be the only one?
Well, what do you wanna do?
Well, it should be a low one too, I think.
Is this, this was the, the?
A low.
That, this is a medium.
Oh, low one.
Medium.
This is the medium.
There's many people that don't want full-time.
So, if we put, if we put a low option in, would we put a low option as, like, seventy-five thousand so that nobody's on a schedule, nobody's there, but if they want to take it, they go? And then if they don't, Mayo takes it? Is that what you're thinking?
She's Mayo covering us though. I get that they took the ambulance out, but they're still covering the town.
So.
I think there's a misconception out there that we're being told, they are still coming.
Yes, exactly.
It's just, there is a fear that what if they can't?
And I, and I told her to get that.
Because if they do, if they vote down our option, that Roseanne just motioned, if they vote that down, and they vote the other one down, we have zero money for our ambulance, or our guys and girls to go up.
So it could be, there could be a default, which would be.
Just Mayo.
Would be, it'd be just Mayo with on-call services.
We could take down seventy-five thousand and use that.
Yeah, so if, if you don't put any money at all for wages in there, there wouldn't be a- anything for even people just taking calls as they.
So, if you look at what we have thus far, for, hold on, I do have some numbers. So you'll have something to go by, Jacob.
Cause if they, if they no-vote our option.
Right.
So we have no, we have no way of paying.
So if we just did on-call run pay, correct? For the months of November, December, and January, for just the runtime, for those three months, we paid ten thousand twenty-five dollars.
For the three months?
For the three months. That doesn't include Mark's daytime hours, that includes the ones that took a shift.
But that's just runtime, that's not the fifteen dollars an hour?
No, fifteen dollars an hour in three months.
No, I just wanted to point that out.
Well, yeah, no, because.
At their, at their rate.
At their rate.
So.
There, well, and that's at the tw- that's at, that's at the twenty, that's at the twenty.
If it trended that way, then we could get away at fifty thousand.
I would do more, because if we're gonna give them the going median rate, it's gonna bump it up, so that would just be our drivers.
Then we have more than.
So we could, if it trended that way, seventy-five would be a decent number. Be more than zero. Bingo. It would be.
So, you putting in three options, yeah?
Well. Really, two. So, in the wording of that, before we finish this motion.
No, we're in discussion.
Um, you put number, you put, which option first? You, well, we have to begin with the mistake option. That's what we have to begin with, because we've got to get that one voted down.
So, I went back, I told you this, Jacob, I went back and looked in our, our book and for the twenty-one and twenty-two, would this be a place where we're talking about this? So we had an article back in twenty-one, twenty, twenty-one to twenty-twenty-two, and it said, um, if Article ten passes, then Articles eleven and twelve, uh, Article eleven, um, shall be removed. So it would be, it's like you have to go down through each one.
Right.
And the wording in that book, that year.
Yes, but what I'm asking is, which one do you wanna put first? Do we wanna go low to high?
I think we have to put the petition in first, to get it out of the way.
So, do we put the petition, and then the median, and then the low, or do we do the petition low, then median?
I'd go highest to lowest, yeah.
So you can't discuss anything at the meeting, that we have three options for EMS? You have to go specifically?
Well, there's time for discussion.
So couldn't we discuss that there's three options?
Only at one article. Yeah, you can only discuss, so like, we do what we do here. You make a motion, second it is, then you have discussion, and, you know, then they vote.
What do you think, and I see that?
Um, yeah, we, we could do the voter petition first, and then the board's recommenda- well, I get, and another question for you to think about is,
Oh, I see.
if you give two options, are you recommending one and just offering the other, or are you offering no recommendation? Um, but i- if you start with the large one, as long as that one is defeated, you're all set to move down to the next one. If.
Right.
I mean, it would be a mistake for people to do it, but if they said, no, we're gonna vote for the large one, even though it's, it's not gonna provide anything, that takes the other option off the table, and you're effectively at zero.
Exactly. We're in a rotten spot. Ay yi yi.
I mean, I, I'm okay with structuring it that way, or I'm okay with, I mean, you could do your own, I mean, we could put the voter petition towards the end, and just treat it as a housekeeping type thing where, I mean, I don't think anybody's gonna campaign to try to pass that in its current form.
I would hope not. But.
But.
There's a lot of info out there, and if people don't.
We have a public hearing coming up, when the book is actually out, and people can actually sit down and read it.
That's true, that's true.
And I think we need to, you know, have faith in the people that, okay, something's going on, and they can come to the public hearing, they can get a book, they can go online and look at it if they don't wanna come get a book. I'm the old school, I like the book, I like writing all through it. But, um, I, you know, we got the public hearing, and I think there, you know, we put it on our website, you know, please be aware.
Where's the public hearing? Oh.
No, that'll be March sixth.
So, what's your recommendation on how to word it and how to structure it?
I think, i- if it were me, I would put the options you want in, and handle that, and then put the voter petition behind it.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm flexible on that.
My, my worry is on that, is this. Is that, there's a lot of information out there, a lot of people are wound up. Do they vote, they're both down, thinking they're gonna get to that, is my worry, and they don't understand that that's.
But this is being recorded tonight, and that's where people are, a lot of people are coming to this. So I think it's gonna give an opportunity to people to see what's going on here. I, I think we need to give them the benefit of the doubt. I don't think we need, I think we can, we've got time between now and then to get the information out.
Can't we put a note, a note over the top of that, or the petition, and just make a note and say, this petition was done in error, for whatever reason, and it has to be voted no on, because it's, there's no way to fund it? And then go to what we know is, but the two other options?
Um, I, I can look into that, I'm not sure. I'm not sure if we put that in writing. I, I would have no problem at the town meeting, standing up when we get to that, and saying,
Okay.
this is what happened, and I'm gonna recommend that you vote no, um, I just don't.
Okay.
And you think, put it at the end for housekeeping issues?
Um.
Because something else will hopefully already be voted on.
Alright.
There were, what'd she say?
Hopefully, one of the other articles will already be voted through.
Alright, so we have a motion, and we have a second, and we have a discussion, do we have any other discussion?
So a motion now is gonna include two?
No, the motion right now is still just getting just one on, one on, and then we've gotta make.
Uh-huh.
Another additional motions.
Second of the motion. But we have the motion and support, and a discussion, do we have any more discussion on it before we vote? All in favor? Alright, now, would you like to make another motion, Mr. Christopher?
Well, I don't know which one we put on, but I make a motion to put the smaller number on, whatever, seven-five thousand, the Mayo covers.
Yeah, with current EMS on-call backup, if available.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, there's people out there that want that.
I support. Yes, very much, I support that. Do we have any discussion on that?
I'm sorry.
Just get the wording on that.
I wasn't hearing it, so.
Um, can you rewind that? Uh, Chris is making a motion to set aside seven, to, to set aside seventy-five thousand dollars to have Northern Light EMS be our primary with current EMS on-call as backup.
She knew what you were thinking. Yeah.
Sorry, she supported.
She's a forward kidding now.
One he said, I support it. Any more discussion on that? Nothing? All in favor? Bingo, bango.
I said forward kidding, not forward back.
Say it, it's only seven-ten, open up.
Is the board making a recommendation for one of those?
Yes. Which one would you like to recommend, Chris?
I don't know, I'm torn.
Well, the board and budget can be on the, the board and budget both should be on that.
I would agree with that, I would have to support the budget committee also.
Because they, they said they would support.
Yeah.
And I'm sure that.
Why can't we support both?
Yeah, I think they would.
I, I'm just saying, just, the, the board would recommend either, if.
No, that, I, I think we need to do either or, we.
Well, the budget committee went with the, with the.
The budget committee should be on the, on the A, the first one.
One ninety-three?
Yes.
Okay.
And.
But it could be budget and us, 'cause we all agreed, all, none of us.
Yeah.
Right.
So you don't think the budget committee should be on the seventy-five, should be just the board?
Well, yeah, yeah, because the boards, when we met with the board, they were very clear what one they went with, right?
Mm-hmm, right.
The budget.
Yes.
Yes.
And, and, in my opinion, I think that we should support the budget committee, because we presented that to them.
Yes, I agree.
So, I guess, in my opinion, we should recommend that one, because.
We should step away.
Yeah, absolutely. We don't always have to agree.
Right. And, and I'm not saying I would be completely unhappy if that's how it goes, but I, I would say, my recommendation, in my own opinion, not speaking for any of you, would be the Corinth A.
Yeah.
So, what do you think? Which one?
I'm going the Corinth A, because the budget committee.
Yeah, I'm with you, but.
Alright, so we like, you wanna take a vote?
Will you approve the warrant that will be the vote?
Okay, that, that would be where we would like to be, I think. So, alright.
Cause there's a, she's got a question.
Oh, I have a question, clarifying question.
Sorry.
So, the, um, seventy-five thousand option that you just discussed, you said on-call?
Yeah, no scheduling, if, if they're available, they come in, we're not paying.
Right. Do we not clarify that in?
We're not paying anything except they're, when they're on the call, we'll pay them at the rate that their qualifications are.
But we call our current thing that we do on-call.
Yeah.
Paid call, I do.
Paid call.
So I guess, like, if we, I'm just thinking you might need to clarify, that's all.
And that's a really hard thing, because that's.
She's beautiful and smart.
Because it's a, it's a EMS term, right? You guys say call, so when we, it, that's the reason I say runtime.
We talk a lot about that.
That we talk a lot about that, because there is, it, there's a, there's a terminology gap.
Do you think that that motion is written in a way that is clear, clarified by that? To set aside seventy-five thousand dollars to have Northern Light EMS be the primary ambulance with Corinth EMS on-call as backup?
On pay call.
On pay?
On pay.
On pay.
Chris, do you?
Pay when they go up. There you go.
Cause they'll get paid for when they, if they actually go.
Right.
They're not gonna get paid for wait time.
Does it kinda sound like you're gonna pay Northern Light seventy-five thousand?
Well, that, that's, yeah, so it, it, correct, you're right, and when she just read that back, you're correct, it does sound that way. To have Northern Light as our primary ambulance service with.
Service by Corinth EMS.
To be funded with seventy-five, to have seventy-five thousand dollars in funds to pay.
I'll read that.
Corinth EMS.
Corinth EMS.
Yeah.
It's better if I'm writing it than saying it.
Why can't you, uh, why can't the board support both, Chris's motion?
We could, we could.
You, you're letting the people decide.
Yes.
So, why do you, why do you, I'm getting, I don't know, I'm just getting the feeling you only wanna do one, why, why?
I, I only wanna do one, because I want.
You wanna support the budget committee?
Well, yes, and I want.
You, you're not gonna put the budget twenty's in, or on the second? You're not gonna put the budget committee's name on the second one, alright?
My full support behind one or the other. Does that make sense?
That's what, I said that, I said that too. Why can't support both of them?
That's kinda weird. And you can, and you can if we should. But, um, you think we should do both?
People don't decide.
I do.
I do.
We put it in.
That's true.
And the budget committee on the other one, you didn't just agree with the game, did you?
I did.
That's four of us.
You're saying it's a zero.
Hey, hey, you better rush out and get a lot taken right now.
Right.
I'm trying to serve one for seventy-five thousand.
That, that is true. Because we don't wanna look like we'll be unhappy if that one goes through. But I guess I was thinking, I, I'm all or nothing. Not that you guys knew that, right? So, but that-
And you never, the seventy-five thousand dollar option never went before the budget committee, so-
Exactly.
Uh, you know, it's not, you're not saying you don't support what they, but they never heard it, so.
Right.
I don't think they actually heard those numbers, but we did discuss it.
They did, they did talk about Northern Light.
Because we talked about if they voted all down, we have nothing.
About just saying- Well, we, we just stay with Northern Light and then, and then our ambulance could cover if we wanted to or available.
We have the pennies from the contingency. Alright, does that, does that work for you? Cause these are questions in your eyes, you're like, whaaat? Anything else on this that we need to discuss?
So are you supporting both of them?
Yes.
Yes.
We can't get the book without us putting it there, so we gotta save.
Yep. No, it's been there before and we didn't support it. So I'm sorry.
I don't have anything else for now.
Okay, on that.
You caused, you caused an aggravation.
It's not his fault, we did it to him.
Oh, I understand.
Oh, my goodness, we get to move on.
And I just wanna, I say thank you.
Yes, and on Jacob.
It won't get easier, Jacob, as I said today.
Alright, new business. Town report dedication, we've already discussed that and we're gonna discuss it after just for-
We'll take care of it.
Yeah.
We'll take care of it.
And, um, you wanna help with the ride up?
I'll fry.
We'll love.
Did you see how we just designated that?
Good job.
Alright, there, good. Alright, volunteer fire assistance grant.
Uh, so everybody has a copy of that. I don't have a lot to say about it, I don't know if you wanna speak on it, Chief, but it's basically a, a fifty-fifty matching grant for items that they were gonna buy anyway.
For street stuff?
Yeah. Um, so, it will come out of the existing budget request.
Yep.
Point two hundred?
We love that. We love out of.
Yes.
Yeah.
And? Here's the item we had to look at. Bingo bango. Alright, now, review and sign warrants.
Uh, are you gonna take any action on the?
Yes, we are. I was.
On the grant?
Not, not on the grant.
On the grant.
I make, I make a motion that we approve the grant.
I can't find my paper. Is that one?
Yeah. J and L, boy.
Well, I gotta send my glasses. Yes, alright, so, all we have to do is-
Just need to vote to accept.
Make motion to accept it?
Make a motion to accept?
Okay, but we gotta say words. Say words.
You just say what it is.
Say what you're accepting.
I've said before, the grant, it was offered by, uh,
Oh, cause we have to accept the grant. I'm like, what are you talking about? I get it.
So Stuart sorta made a motion and no one did anything with it and then Charlie made the same motion and then Stuart said-
Well, I said support it.
Oh, you're supporting it, okay.
Okay.
Supporting the grant.
Do you have a main for it?
I think we've already had a lot of discussions.
We have, brain on all this. Dead. Forest fire prevention specialist. That's what it is. Alright, well, do we have any discussion on it? We're just gonna accept it. Alright, all in favor?
Thank you.
Now, we're gonna review and sign warrants, five and six.
I make a motion we accept warrants.
Um, are we all done? I know, that's where I'm at too. Okay, go ahead.
I make a motion we accept warrants, uh, four and five, five and six, right, five and six.
I support it. Any discussion? He's lying, don't forget. All in favor? Now, where I've been waiting to get all right. Road commissioner information, damaged mailboxes.
Yeah. So, we get a couple complaints, uh, about damaged mailboxes.
From Loud?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, so the town doesn't have any, there's no town liability on that, but I don't know what the customer is, um-
No, no responsibility. The customer is, we're sorry, that's what we're all free delivery, I'm out, Stu. Place your mailbox, so your mail lady will be happy, thank you.
I know, I went and looked at both of them, one on the West Corinth Road looked like it was hanging out over the road.
Yes.
Um, and then there was one on the Cushman Road where the damage was to the post and I think could be patched up probably pretty easily anyway.
It'll be fine.
Okay.
Mine's still standing.
I know, I know. Well, yeah, it went down once. Was that all we needed on that?
Yes.
Okay. I thought we were going, I was like, oh.
No, I just, uh, we haven't talked about it and before I said we weren't gonna do anything, I wanted to make sure that-
No, that is, that's their problem, unfortunately, it's their problem. It's the cost of having a mailbox. Which is why some people have a P O box. Oh, sorry, did I just point you?
I didn't bring this up, but my mailbox is got orange paint on it, does that mean anything?
I don't know anything.
Jake doesn't have orange on it.
You, you want to be seen?
Hey, could you defend me here? I don't have an orange beard, I'm gray, I don't know what you're talking about. Alright, ditching and culvert replacement, moving on.
Uh, yeah, I just put these items on here, uh, because it's time to start planning for work you wanna do in twenty twenty-five. Um, I, yeah.
Well, the brush cutting, didn't we put more money in to do that? Is that the side of the-
Yeah, he wants to know what you wanna do.
Yeah, yeah.
Or what road?
Right.
Yeah.
And, and I-
So you wanna go and talk to both of them?
I don't need a decision tonight, and I know the rest of the Tate Road and Cushman Road was on the list for, for brush cutting, but, um, just to kinda put it on everybody's radar, this is something that-
Yeah, cause tonight is not that night, right?
No. No, and I thought people might wanna
Think about it.
make some observations as they're traveling around.
Yes.
Hitting just mailboxes. What was the second road take for what?
Cushman.
Cushman, Cushman is the one that needs it. Terrible. Alright, so town road improvement plan two, cause we have those notes from-
I just did bring that notebook to you.
Right, you had a tentative list that you thought gave, but it'd be good to make that official, so.
Alright. Do we have any municipal officer input? Do we need to technically table that or is this a stop and we move on? I make a motion we table that.
I'll second that.
For at least twelve meetings.
Yeah, I knew that. I don't second that, I feel.
I table, I would like to table summer road work plans until we get Roseanne's notebook.
Roseanne will get it.
Next meeting, or two meetings.
No, give us two meetings.
Okay.
I have some input.
Which is, just a second.
Hurry up.
Does anybody support the tabling?
Oh, table, that's what it is.
Any discussion? All in. Okay, now, municipal officer input. Charlie?
Yep. I went up on EMS. We've been working on EMS service since last February, a solid year. First time ever in my fifteen years on the board to have a department refuse to work with our budget committee and board recommendations. Only their plan for three hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars and then was told that this is only a Band-Aid. Also informed the board that going to a regional plan would cut, would cost the citizens of Corinth nine hundred thousand dollars to one point one million. We, the town of Corinth citizens, cannot afford this. My concern is for our citizens who are struggling now to pay their taxes. So with that being said, I would like to make a motion that the town of Corinth withdraw from the Strategic Planning Committee and the regionalization program for EMS with towns of Glynburn and Conuska immediately. I'm asking our town manager to contact those two towns and please let them know.
Who making a motion?
I need to get the wording of what that committee was showing, withdraw from the Glynburn.
Strategic planning. Do you want her to read it back to you?
I can, she's got it written right here.
Oh, I didn't see her, sorry. I will second that. Do we have any discussion?
We do.
Okay.
I, I, I understand when that came about. I think we ran the impression it was going to be a local thing and not a regional. And I spoke with Jason about that and, um, you know, he said the verbiage of the motion made, it, it left it open and it did. I do think we need some type of committee though, because we do need to be looking, um, at options. And like we said, this next year, it's gonna give us time to look at data and stuff. Um, I may not totally be, totally be on board about the regionalization, that, that is a little bit of shell shock, but I do believe we need some type of committee to be looking at options. I mean, I mentioned the Kevin McGinnis plan that looks at, he's more, looks at more community, how the community, how can the communities work together and come up with plans.
Well, I think originally we thought, like, regionalization was like, maybe Conuska, but Charleston, like, people that were there and, and at no point did we assume we were gonna lose ownership of the vehicles that we worked so hard to pay for or that we were gonna be handed a bill like the school board, that, that's some of the things that-
I, I, I understand that and I, I, I wasn't prepared for that either. I think we were under the impression that it was going to be a community and regionalization Corinth-based, um, group of people to plan. Um, but, that wasn't our motion. And I under, and I, I take ownership of that. Cause I believe I'm the one that made the motion.
I-
Um-
And you're usually very wordy with that.
No, I'm learning. But, that being said, I do think we need some type of strategy, um, plan going on, especially coming up this next year, we're gonna be ready, if, if, if this goes through, even if it doesn't go, even if our, the Plan A doesn't go through and something else goes, we still need to be looking at this. We're still-
We got other fire departments willing to mutually aid with us.
Well, I mean, but we got, yeah, but it's limited, right? I mean, when we're, we're talking about that, you know, mutually aid may look different than ambulance to ambulance. It may be like, we have the ambulance, but we have people in bordering towns that have first responders or, you know, I don't know what it's gonna look like, but I, I do struggle with going right from no EMS to regionalization. I understand that that's, you know, our county has provided a, um, consultant and has been working, you know, with other towns and stuff, but I think-
I could ask you in what, you have been going to all the meetings?
I know you have.
But we, I need to stabilize now.
Okay, Charlie, but can I have it for a minute?
Sure.
Okay. So, the reality is, this right now is in a planning stage, I go to the meetings, uh, there's no money involved. All we're doing is people putting their own time in, and I'm putting mine in because I wanna know as a member of the board. We would not be giving anybody anything if we ever, and I found this out last night. I found out that if we did ever go, go to the regionalizing, it's down the road a ways. The fire trucks will be bought by that, we don't give nobody nothing. They, they pay for that stuff, they rent that, rent our station. But, that's a ways down the road and there's a lot of planning. I mean, right now, you can drop out of it, but it's not costing anybody, not costing town one penny. And, I agree with Roseanne, with Roseanne, the fact that, and while I've been here at these meetings and Paul is excellent and it's, it's, just really hired him up again. The funding and the grants are gonna be going to regionalization. And we don't, numbers we don't know. Now, we'll say the number that, that Jason used, when I looked at the thing, that they had us at forty-nine percent of the budget and, and, uh, uh, Glynburn was at twenty-nine percent. So the numbers, they, they didn't have no, we had all our numbers, they had none. So, that number would be totally out of screw because they got five thousand people. So they're gonna be the biggest shareholder in that, not us.
Well, the number that we used-
Okay, but let me finish now. So, they are talking also, including the other towns. And then that would be paid service back, to get money back for an ambulance that was based here. If it was in with Hudson and Charleston and Bradford, then that's when you get some of your money back to help offset it. But there's nothing set in stone, there's no cost to anybody. It's just the fact that at some point in time, you're either gonna be on the ground floor or you're gonna be looking to come out the cellar. So I-
We're not gonna be hoping in twenty twenty-six to propose this to the town, that's what it said.
Well, no, nobody knows, nobody knows, that's-
That hasn't been said.
Well, it can be said, they say a lot of things, Chris, but the town has to vote, the town has to vote on. So whenever it comes to the town, it's have to be voted on by the town to accept it.
I agree.
So, like I said, right now, I'm going to be-
You just said it was gonna be a long time down the road, but it's been said we want to vote.
I don't, I don't think twenty-six is realistic, but the, my, my, uh, feeling right now, twenty-six would not be a realistic year. I think it's gonna be at least another year beyond that because it's just the funding and everything else, you gotta get funding. And right now that this group is put in for, the group that I'm on has been put in for twenty thousand dollar grant, Jason, are we, yeah?
It's, uh, forty-two thousand.
Forty-two thousand dollar grant to do more studies. It's, I mean, it's, all it is is a planning group. There's, that's, like I said, no cost to town, if the town says we don't want that, it's no big deal. But to me, throwing away something that don't cost you nothing and being on the ground floor or something, it may happen, it may come to that anyway. We're gonna have a choice down the road. It may not, may be that. And the one thing that the guy said to me, everybody, the fire chief in Glynburn said, everybody in town don't have to have everything. Just like right now, between the three towns, this five sets of jobs a life. Well, those got with grants, but the grants could be used for maybe something else. And, and the granting could be forthcoming, when you got a, a town, uh, just say, the three towns are talking. If a grant comes up for the one town of them three towns, the three towns are gonna get the grant. There's not gonna be no more single town down because no getting no bang for the buck. I mean, I'm not saying this is the way to go, but I've seen that this town probably have to go that way. Cause like the guy, the other, the fire chief, I have a lot of respect for him. He says, you know, we got these fancy trucks, get nobody put in seats. There's not enough bucks for the seats. So he said, we need help like everybody else does. And if you had a call system, you don't have to necessarily come from here, they could become from Conuska or Glynburn. So, it's just a, it's just a strategy they're trying to do and trying to figure out what would work. There's been no brilliant numbers, the numbers that was given before, I don't think are, are realistic at this point in time because-
The only other example of this type of thing is Holland.
That's not really good even example, because a lot of the towns had no, had nothing.
But they're now at a twenty-one mil rate, they're now at, they've got buildings that are sitting empty, they've got a bill that is submitted to them with no negotiation. It's submitted to them, just like me signing the school check. They say, this is what you owe, this is what you pay, pay it, like it or not.
Not, not arguing again, and just, I'm just saying that we are under no obligation financially any other way other than the fact that I go to these meetings. I just think dropping out of it now is pretty mature.
But I think refocusing in a way that we had planned would be a better idea. That, that would be my opinion.
So you're gonna do it internally, in our own fire station?
Well, what? No, in our own community. And, and the people that we had, you know, that, that was not what we had discussed. It may not have been worded in a way, um, it may not have been made plain what we were thinking, but that wasn't as a board what we were thinking. So, um-
I, I just feel we need to get our own department up and running correctly before we start. And Glynburn of all places, which stretches from Pushaw to Levana and near Bango, why we aren't even looking at uh, Corinth, uh, Charleston and- uh, Corinth, uh, Charleston and Bradford, someone who's been close to us, it just bothers me that all of a sudden we're tied in with Glimberen and Conuska.
Well, we're not necessarily tied with them, they're in the same discussion, they're in the discussion group.
That's right, but that's the three towns, those three towns, Corinth, so we can't get in with them. I just feel that we're not ready for this, and we don't need to do it, and.
I think to refocus in a way that, that we were trying to.
At this point, it's already, it's already formed. He's, he's going in as a, as a board, I mean, there's, it's a discussion group, I mean, it's, we can re.
But is it essentially just all about regionalization, no other ideas are getting thrown out, or?
If they're applying for grants as a regionalization, they're, it is together.
But the grants, integral, we haven't even got a name for the group yet, it, it's just, all it is, it's fun, trying to figure out what will work, what won't work.
But if we put our name on it as we're one of the towns, is there an obligation?
No.
Is there an underlying obligation?
There's no obligation for it goes to town meeting and being voted on, it's gotta be voted on. Huh?
What about the grants?
The grants, uh, through the company. And that's, that's gonna help pay for Paul and any other material we might need. We're not putting our name on nothing.
Do we have any other discussion?
Um, I forgot my name last time, I'm sorry. Um, my name's Caitlin Alhaj. Um, I, I'm just wondering, is there a way to restructure? They kind of ran with your planning committee, and it's become just regionalization, not planning for other options for EMS. And so why couldn't that just be the regionalization committee, the five-year option? Um, and you have a planning committee that's gonna work throughout this next year on options when we land in the same spot next year to talk about EMS and what's needed, and we've gathered the data that Roseanne has, you know, looked at for the three months, and we'll have nine months of data and be able to look at, what are we proposing next year for EMS? In our own planning committee, that was what you guys wanted, and we separate out the regionalization, like, can we restructure those?
I, I would add too, this is also fire department any in that, and just for the record, the new fire truck is somewhere between eight hundred and a million dollars now, it's three years out. Part of the thing is, you don't have to, every town don't have to have everything, and this is what it's always been, we, if we, everybody, every town got their own fire trucks. Like Corinth's got a lot of trucks. Well, that's got, that's, that's got a big guy, your, point being is, if Glennon needed it, we would go there. Now, we go that, maybe not Glennon now, I don't, are we part, that part of the mutually aid? I mean, it's basically.
We deal with three fire departments, so three EMS.
Well, not necessarily, because you do have a group heading out, but it's a lot, like, we, we're putting in a contingency account every year. I mean, we don't do that. I'm saying, I'm not saying it's gonna be free, nothing in this role is free, all I'm saying is, it's a, no, at this point in time, it's a no-cost option to look at, and right now, Hudson possibly might be getting in, and I'm sure that Bradford and How, and Charleston will also wanna get involved as well, but.
Well, Jason said that you've decided as a group to keep it where the group was.
We talked last night, but see, this is, this is what the talking stage is. Last night, we talked about Loud and Hudson, so.
What do you mean allowing?
Well, you, you gotta ask to be part of it, Charlene. We, we're not soliciting, we're not knocking on doors and say, hey, you wanna be part of this.
So we asked, we asked to be a part of it, Corinth asked to be a part of it?
That was for me, Jason.
Can I, so, over the summer, the county reached out to all the towns around us to say they had a consultant that was working with fire and EMS agencies that were interested in regionalization or examining how they could provide better services or better afford the services that their communities are providing. We reached out, we called them back, and we said, we wanna, we wanna learn more, we wanna be a part of that. Glennon did it, and so did Conuska. Levant's done it, Carmel's done it, Etna, Stetson, Newburgh, they're, they're in a group right now, the same consultants working with them to do something over there. We, we did meet last night, we did ask the group previously, like, hey, uh, Charleston didn't call the county back and say, say they wanted to participate. Bradford didn't call the county back and say they wanted to participate. We, we asked the group after we came here, we said, hey, do we wanna, we're, our group is, it has a shared vision, the vision is to take care of our communities, and we went back to the group and we said, hey, uh, do we wanna open this up to bringing other groups in? And at the advice of the group and of the consultant, they said, let's keep it small right now, because we already have a shared vision. Our work product is more mature than these other groups that are, that are getting together. We even reached out to Northern Light and talked to Northern Light, and Northern Light said, hey, can we be a part of it? We brought that back to the group too, and the group at this time said, we don't think Northern Light would have a value add to it. There were several reasons for that. One of them, they didn't feel if Northern Light was in the room, that they would be able to, uh, speak freely about the concerns they had with Northern Light.
So.
So, I think you're relying on the consultant as a subject expert, and the one thing I would say is.
We have a motion and a second.
What's your plan?
Discussion. Is there any more discussion?
I, I just feel at this point, if it is truly, I mean, truly discussion, and it is one of the things that is out there, it'd be better to be at the table and hear what's going on. I just don't want it to come across that Corinth is endorsed, that this board is endorsing it because we said, go ahead and make a, a group. I want that, you know, very clear, we are, as a board, we are not endorsing regionalization. We endorse a strategic planning.
Mm-hmm.
And that is not the plan, that was not this board's vision at the time. I still think we need some type of planning group, and we could create another one. But I, if this is truly just discussion and nothing's going to happen, it says it's gonna come back and say, Corinth, you said that, and I, I think it's good, like I keep saying, I think we need to be proactive instead of reactive, and we need to be aware of things going on. Um, I'd much rather have one of our selectmen at the table hearing what's going on than something just coming back at us. But making it very clear that our board at this time is not endorsing.
But none of it's been clear, that's been the problem. That's, that's been the problem from the beginning. None, nothing has been clear.
I think we're getting a better vision on that with our selectmen, and hopefully this will get cleared up, I think we.
I agree with that.
We need to set some ground rules, and going forward, I think one of the ground rules is we need to be very careful when we are making the motion, to be very clear what our expectation is. I think that's gonna be falling on us, and I'm the one that made that motion, I'm ninety-nine point nine percent sure.
There was a lot of discussion.
There was, but.
A lot of discussion, and none of it was.
But when you go back, but when we go back and look at our minutes, what is it, they're gonna say, they're just gonna see that.
I agree, I'm just saying that you can try and take all the blame, but it's not where it was.
I'm not trying to take all the blame, I am not, but I'm saying, we need to be responsible for our piece. This is truly discussion and we're not endorsing it.
Right.
But we need to have somebody at the table to be aware of what is being discussed, and Stuart, do you feel comfortable doing that?
Yeah, I've been going to it for.
I know you have, you've been telling us, but.
I just.
I'm just saying.
I just, I just think it's, as you said, proactive, it's better, but you've got, you gotta, you gotta hear motion on the table, so.
And look at the price, the figure.
But, there is no price yet, Charlene.
There's no, I mean, we've heard some scary prices, we've heard some scary prices, but we at least need to be at the table to know, is that right? Is it wrong? Is it more? And what do we, but what does it gonna, I mean, like he said, he's just learning last night that they'll buy our equipment and then they'll rent our building, so I think we need to be aware of those things, 'cause we wouldn't have known that.
I didn't know.
We, we wouldn't have known that.
But during, but during budget, George Buzzell is our budget committee, he said, I want you to, I want you to realize that it's not gonna be cheap, it's very costly being regional.
But Charlene, I'm, at this point, I'm not saying we are gonna go regionalization, it's a discussion group.
It is, but I think, I think as a town right now, our department needs to, we need to get stable.
It's two people, it's two people, it's two people from our whole town.
But our EMS, our EMS, EMS department needs to be stable with what we're gonna be doing for the next year at least, before we start thinking about regionalization.
But he's one person on the EMS department, we've got, we've got officers that we need to be working with. He's not an officer, he's, he's doing something separate, we've got our selectmen, I don't see that it's gonna hurt, we're not, it's not gonna hurt, it's two people. And it's, it's, it's our officers, it's our officers that, of our fire department and EMS that we need to be working with to do, be strategic planning, that's, and this is just another discussion group with two people from each town, that can't make any decisions without the town. It's discussion. Just like this is discussion. We're not solving the world's problems, we're just having a discussion.
All right, so, I guess not we'll have to do but take a vote. All in favor? All opposed? Okay. All right, so, do we have any other municipal input?
It's probably not for me for tonight.
Why? Please tell me we don't have an executive session. Would anybody like to make a motion to adjourn this fund?
Any motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, no, do we want to discuss?
No.
Do you want to adjourn that?
Just everybody to sit, go home.
And all favor. And we are going to.